We really can. Um, um, um. Since then, since then.
Oh, sorry. Oh, sorry. Just a second.
He needs to donate a microphone.
That'd be great.
Okay. Go ahead. Um, but since, since he told me that, um, I've learned from a variety of people that, depending on a variety of circumstances, they might start somewhere else though, you know, and I think I've made, I've announced before that, you know, earlier dates when I thought that they would be starting, so, you know, as, as it has been, you know, you believe it when you see it, but that's a general idea of what they're telling us. So, um, local first responders and officials from the state and city will be participating in a meeting tomorrow up at the fairgrounds to discuss emergency procedures. The public is welcome to attend, however, this is a working meeting for city, state, county officials. I believe there will be a public comment period though at the end. We'd like to have a, a meeting for the public. Shortly after that, we're trying to get people scheduled now. Depending on how that goes, I will keep you updated on our, our progress in that regard. Should we have another emergency event like a flood? This city does stick to a chain of command. Like last year, the county disaster and emergency coordinators are contact persons. We work together when emergencies occur. The city is in daily contact with various people to check to see how things are doing, how high the creek is, what the weather service is advising, and when the, when the debris will be removed. We also coordinate with county and state to prepare for emergencies on a daily and monthly basis. We're all nervous about future spring runoff, especially this year. Should another flood occur, we will again minimize the impact, work to minimize the impact on the community and ensure that people are safe, and we will provide all the resources that we can, uh, that we can to minimize the effect on the Red Lodge community. Please make sure that you sign up for code RED. Code RED is the Carbon County Emergency Notification System. If you need any help, please call either us or the county DES office. The signup is on the carbonalert.org website, and you can always call City Hall, and we will help you get the information that you need. Uh, you know, I, I try to remind people as often as possible that if you have any questions about anything, please contact City Hall. I know there's periodic misinformation floating around out there, and all of us here at City Hall are more than happy to do our best to make sure that you have answers to your questions, and I mean that. So, um, the next, uh, that's, that's my flood update. Courtney, do you have anything?
A couple of things. Thank you to anyone, everyone that attended the DEQ public meeting, the, a couple weeks ago at this point. There's some really good public comment in that, and so appreciate participation in that one. Um, if, you know, if there's ever a project going on in Rock Creek, there's likely, hopefully a permit for it, and I have all of those on record, and they are available to the public. It does go through a, a public notice period for public comment, um, but we keep those and we can look at and make the time if you have questions on MBT projects. They have a public information officer in charge of getting out weekly emails that you can sign up to directly. They sent one out earlier today. I forwarded it to the, anyone in the Google group. But they do have somebody that's in charge of, of taking in any public questions, comments. We meet with them weekly to kind of get updates, ask them, you know, if the river starts getting a little higher, what's your plan to navigate that? And so they are finishing up some of their retaining walls, and they will be, um, beginning to widen the river where they finished up, uh, the work as they go. And I think they're hoping to finish that project up at mid-May.
Thanks. Can you mention a little something about the DEQ project, um, with the coal slide?
Sure. So the, the DEQ project is just north of Ninthing Coopers, uh, where the coal repository eroded away. So their first step is to, uh, kind of create a little protection wall, and they, they received a lot of guidance from the Army Corps, Army Corps on that. And the goal for that is just for the high runoff season to prevent that area from eroding even more and, you know, pushing coal into the waterway. And then once, once we're past our high water season, they will go through and restore that bank. Again, I have all those documents for their permitting available at City Hall if you'd like to see them.
Thank you. Jim, did you have anything you wanted to add?
No, you, you covered everything. I've been, what's going on. So, there's nothing more. I can add.
Okay, thank you. Um, so that's everything we have for the flood update. Again, if you have any questions in particular, please give us a call. Next up, we're going to do a little slideshow. Brian Hanna, who's our building inspector, and Jim Bushnell, who's our public works director, have put together this informational thing, presentation about everything we know and can be documented about the airport. The city doesn't have any intention of making the airport go away. We're just trying to, we're just trying to agree on a portion to dedicate so that they can get FAA funding, so that they can get the runway repaved and paid for by the government. So, um, in a nutshell, that's our goal, and, um, again, you know, we're, we just want to get on the same page. It's been kind of a, um, you know, if the facts have been hard to discern in this, and it's gone on for a long time, so it'll be, it'll be very good for the community to get a current understanding that we all agree on, so that the airport can move forward and the city can move forward. And so with that, do you want to start your presentation?
Sure. Hold on. Okay, so we've been at this for a lot of months, so what?
Yes, and can you drop the light? Thank you.
So, the first page is the boundary of the Red Lodge Airport. Highlighted in the yellow is what the city, um, has sent to the airport board and have received no, nothing back, plus, minus, or whatever on that, but this is what we're offering to actually put as a dedicated property. In the next slide, the city is in no way trying to eliminate or close the airport. The city is trying to obligate the appropriate land for the operation of funding of the airport. The Red Lodge would like to dedicate and use of the land within this boundary located to the airport for its operation use and FAA funding. There's currently no actual survey boundary for the airport runway to be presented to the FAA funding. The next page is, this boundary for the airport is important for two reasons. The boundary will ensure the airport has its land dedicated 100% for its future use, control, and FAA funding. This allows, the city retains control of parks, infrastructure, lands that may be used and maintains security as they arrive. It is important to note that the city will continue to allow the lands outside the established boundary to be used for emergency purposes as needed. With this boundary, there will be no need for future discussions of where, what land is, will be set and protected. Zoning will always be in place towards airport area when it comes to construction and expansion. So we're going to go to this. So 1997, the retract was served by Track 1 for the annex, for the purpose of the annexation. So the city has owned this property basically forever, but in 1997, they annexed the city airport into the city limits. It was not in the city limits at the time, it was still in the county. So at that time, they did this survey to get, to annex it in to the city limits, which it did, and you'll see a little corner there. I was president of the rodeo association at the time, and they were going to annex it into, and we protested that and did not want the rodeo grounds inside the city limits. So that, that survey, let that out. The next one shows you, in the 1998 amendment, the other, other 11 acres of the rodeo ground, that wasn't counted in that first one, we got amended that it was not in the city limits either. So that's where, as we move forward with this, so the annexation happened now. In that same annexation, they did annex the fairgrounds into the city in 1998, so that, that turned out, you know, 10 years later, find out that's not the best thing. Then in 2004 amendment to Track 1 to create the airport hangar area to include land extending to Airport Road. So the only, uh, survey that gave any actual dedication to the airport was for the hangar area. Nothing in the air, in the airstrip, anything was ever, but that was in the dedication there in the 2004. We move on to the 2016 amendment to the track was remove the survey of the dog park out of the Track 1 for the dedication of the dog park on the other side of the creek, which was still in, in the Track 1 survey. And then we'll move down to the most current, the 2002 survey of the hangar area. What that includes, a change, as they moved forward and they changed the layout of the hangars and the deals and expanded it a little bit to the south, and so this is the latest survey, and still the only dedication is the hangar area for the airport. So as we move forward, the next deal, so here is the current agreement, airport agreement, and this most current and used agreement within, refers as section C and D of real property, schedule C below, and schedule D is a Bridger Airport. So the Bridger Airport, but schedule C is still the one included, is just the hangar area. This is in the agreement signed in 2018 by the past mayor. This next image is, in 2004, the city did a economic study and presented for the light industrial area, this land could be used for many purposes, not just light industrial, but when this deal came out, as you'll see this image, well, you can't see very well up there, but the other area is what was dedicated airport property. Rest of the city property was to be used for light industrial or further, which in some of this, I said, one of our new, uh, things come up is affordable housing. Well, in part of this, you go down on that end of the, of the north end, well, there's city-owned property that would be ideal for affordable housing, because you have apartments to the east, and you have apartments to the south or northwest in that area, because, believe me, it's coming. Affordable housing, there's nobody having these commercial property, they're going to build affordable housing without some kind of city, and you'll find out that's happening in big cities, small towns. Affordable housing is something seriously coming down the road. City has an opportunity here to be a part of that. Like I said, in this deal, in that study in 2004, at that time, the airport were agreed, yeah, this is the, this worked, this worked. So then we're going to want to study boundary versus city zoning map. So this zoning will remain to protect the airport and the residents of Red Lodge, and I can let Courtney go on about what this zoning is. It isn't airport property, the zoning around the airport. Do you want to add anything to what that?
That's in the, in the just of what zoning does, it kind of helps navigate, um, the, the land use and how it'll be managed when we have anything that comes forward. It's not really a dedication of land for specific use.
So then the next slide, is this out of their study that the airport is doing, that their master plan deal they're trying to work on to get this FAA approved? So this is just one of their, a design that shows what the runway could look like, would look like to be FAA approvable. And so this, this one particular, it shortens it on, on the end and adds to deal, but it, no matter what they do at the airport, the runway is never going to get any longer. I mean, it's lengthier than it's ever been, so it's going to be sized to the class airport it is today, which is with a smaller aircraft. We're not going to have jet plane landing here and, and, uh, but that, that's just one of their deals they have in four or five options. So move to the next. So this boundary following items will remain in the city-controlled land. The park area from 78 to the rodeo grounds, maintained by the city and used for events at the rodeo grounds, fairgrounds, and other gatherings. All of the roads that are currently in use around the airport, Airport Road, South Airport Road, to the Remington, and the road to the rodeo and fairgrounds. All the trail systems and parklands that surround the airport. And if you look at that, there's a lot of, there is a lot of dedicated park around every side of that airport. The main water storage tank for the city located south of the hangar would remain in the city's deal. Other city-owned lands that can have a future use. None of these areas should be located in the airport boundary and under the airport Not only will these set boundaries allow the airport to continue its operations into the future, but it will also provide protection to the airport land. The city is confident that the hangar area and the paved runway are the only necessary land the airport needs for operation and to become FAA approved. It is the city's duty to act in the best interest of the residents of this community, and this is done by remaining in control of all city-owned assets. This allows for continued maintenance and future expansions that would generate tax revenue, jobs, housing, et cetera. Should the future determine the airport needs more space, the city can at that time negotiate land to that boundary. And our last slide is this, a, a deal of someone researching, so the Bridger Airport, you'll see on the left, it has a hangar area and a runway. West Yellowstone, which is on state land, has a hangar area and a runway. And not really comparable, because this, they've invested a lot of millions of dollars, but the Hamilton Airport, which is much bigger and a lot more set up, but in the, in that same deal, it has a hangar area and a runway. And so as we put this forward to the airport board, we need to get, and get this done, so they have an actual dedicated property, because the history, all of the years the airport's been there, it's never been done. The only dedicated property is the hangar area. FAA approved, they need a dedicated deal that they are actually in control of, that they know will be there for 25 years, whatever, it's 20 years, I believe, but under their control. And that's what the city has put forward to them, and without hearing anything back from them, we think that is what will, will work, and that's what we're offering.
Thank you, Jim. Brian, did you have anything you wanted to add?
Nope, he covered it all.
All right. Now, um, so the format for this is the council can ask questions of Jim and Brian and Courtney, and have a conversation amongst ourselves. It's not open for public comment, because this is really a, an opportunity for the council to become familiar with it and ask all the questions that they want to, but after that occurs, then we will have time for public comment on all the matters, and, and you can comment on anything you want that's on the agenda, or anything that's not on the agenda. And just to keep it straight in your mind, there will be a special public comment time for the issue of the resolution to set the fees for the recycling center. So, but it's up to you if you want to do that during the public, general public comment, or if you want to wait until the, the formal public comment for that item. And so, um, council at the table, do you have any questions for Brian or Courtney? Or Courtney, did you have anything you wanted to add?
No.
Because I'm sure there's plenty of questions, so does anybody have any?
Um, so I, I do. I'm curious, uh, just based on the maps that I've seen to date, my understanding, and you kind of alluded to it in a particular bullet point, so when there is a need for emergency response, the flood, the fire we had a couple of years ago, the community relies on being able to land those helicopters outside of the boundary that's currently suggested. Have you guys talked about that, or?
Yeah, well, I guess, it will be there, still available for that purpose, and like we, we had the fire, they landed there, but the fire prior to that, they landed up in the, uh, ramp south of it.
Correct. I guess, I guess what I'm getting at is if it's not included in the boundary that we propose moving forward.
We said, it's still available for any emergency service that would be needed.
Today, but if, but if we decide to pursue expansion of light industrial or something like that, and something goes into that place, then our community does have a, we would lose some space that we're currently using for emergency response for land.
Depending on what emergency where it is, believe me, they find, when they need helicopter aid in a fire, they find the best possible place close to that fire. Does that mean this canyon is going to catch on fire? Is that probably the closest place? Or if it's over in the prires? Is that the best place? I mean, it's completely, they, fires happen all over the state, they have it anywhere. It, it will be available until, there's no immediate deal to do anything with that property except keep it in the control of the city.
Understood, absolutely.
And so it will be there if they want, if we have a fire next year, or flood next year, or whatever, this year, it's still available, will always be available, open. But the other deal is that parkland next between there, and they can land helicopters there too. There's, there's more space, open spaces. It's not like that's the only place you're ever going to land a helicopter and land on.
Understood. I guess I'm just, I just wanted to be clear that the boundaries that we are, that you guys are proposing does not include the space that we have currently used, or in the last two times we've needed, emergency response to land helicopters. It does not include that space.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
You know, the city, from my standpoint, will never not have a place to land emergency vehicles. Currently, you know, the, the status of that land would not be changing, because that land is not, um, dedicated to any airport use at this point in time anyway. It's, it's public property. It's not delineated in any way, shape, or form, and so that use would continue, and, and if we wanted to do any kind of a development there, I, I can guarantee that that would be a consideration. So, um, at least from my point of view. Are there any more questions?
Yeah, I just, I'm just trying to understand what the motivation is for this presentation right now, and, you know, what's the mode of contention? So why are we, what's prompting you to do this right now? And if there's, you know, something, another side to the story, is that going to be presented as well? Because I just found myself without having that context, not really knowing what questions I'd want to ask.
The airport is going forward with their plan, and they have to have dedicated property to move forward to get FAA funding. They don't have that today. The only dedicated property they have is a hangar area. If they go to FAA, and that's all they have dedicated, believe me, they're not going to get there. They need to have that runway dedicated also, that it's in their control.
And we, I think we did have a presentation last year from the airport board on their desire to finish the master plan to pursue FAA funding.
I guess the thing is just kind of maybe summarizing that, so that it's fresh as far as what the issue is.
The airport board also did a presentation at the, uh, are they quarterly or monthly?
Quarterly meetings.
Quarterly meetings. And, you know, I'm guessing if they need to do that again, then they will, and anybody who's interested in attending can. Anything else? Anybody else have a question?
I, I have a, I guess it's a comment more than anything. My understanding is, is that, um, there is an airport board meeting coming up here soon, like this month. Okay. And my understanding was, is that they don't agree with, with that map. And so I guess my, I, I guess I'm just curious on the next steps, if the city and the airport board cannot agree, what are the next steps? Does it go to, you know, mediation, or, um, you know, what's next?
It's, it's city land, and so the city has, you know, we, we want to hear from the airport board. I attend airport meetings, board meetings whenever I can. Um, we, I hope that we can reach an agreement, but, um, you know, it, it is city land. I, I would like, I think it's a good idea to at least give them the runway so that they can get this funding, because that's, that's more than what they have right now, but it also formalizes the agreement and, and for, for the future people on council and on the airport board. We're not taking anything away. We're trying to give them something is my basic understanding.
And the airport board has had that in their hands for over two months and have never contacted us back in any way, shape, or form whether they agree, or they want to, you know, we thought we were going to negotiate and try to work something out between it, but we have got nothing back from the airport board, since then having that two months ago. So at their next meeting, we will be there and hear their deal, and well, I mean, this is not a cut and dry. This is just giving you the information as a council, what's going on with the airport property. They need to have dedicated property, which they don't have.
And, and when is that airport board meeting, the next one?
Yeah, two weeks.
April, April 25th.
Okay.
One o'clock.
Okay.
That's the wish results.
And if anybody has any information they want to share with us, or, or, or anything, you know, please let us know, send us an email, give me a call, because, um, we want all the cards on the table, so we can, you know, get this behind us. So are there any more questions from council?
Yes. What's the process for dedication?
That's something that needs to be determined, because I don't know what the FAA requires for exactly what paperwork, but we'll make sure that, you know, it's, I, I believe it would probably be a 20 or 25 year, it could be a memorandum of understanding, it could, you know, I'm, I'm not quite sure of that format, but, um, you know, from the city then, you know, this, this, this funding is something that the airport needs to pursue. The city doesn't have anything to do with pursuing that funding, and so at a minimum, we can survey the land and, um, you know, file it with a clerk, just so that it's on record that the city agrees to dedicate this land to airport operations. But if, if there's something more that we need to do from the FAA requirements, then, you know, we would certainly look at them and approve them how it's ever is appropriate to approve. Anything else from council? I'm sure that we'll have more discussion about this, and so spring is on its way, and so we'll just keep, keep our door open and our phone lines open, and, um, we'll see where we move forward. That's pretty much, did you have anything else you wanted to add, Courtney, Jim, or Brian?
No.
Okay. All right, then, that's all we need to do for the airport presentation. Thank you. Next up is public comments, and of course, like I said earlier, if, if there's anybody online who would like to comment, um, why don't you go ahead now? And does anybody have any comments they'd like to make online? And if, if you do, I don't hear anybody right now, but if you do, then, then go ahead and, and just vocally nudge me, and I'll give you an opportunity. So if anybody else has any comments, please approach the podium, state your name and your address, and you're limited to three minutes, and, and so try to keep them to be helpful comments, and so please approach the podium and speak on any issue that you want. Just be aware that we will have more opportunities for public comments for the recycling fees.
I'll try. I own the view, Bo Ewell is my name, live at 8 Franklin Lane in Red Lodge, and have been associated with the airport here for 25 years or so, something like that. I am your, one of your two representatives on the joint airport board, along with Steve Smith, and then the three county commissioners, as well as two people from Bridger, so I'm one of your representatives. I also am the one who usually, at least informally, coordinates with the firefighting, helicopters, the search and rescue, and all of those sorts of things. So probably have as much sort of on the ground and in the air experience with the disasters and firefighting and all the rest as anyone else. I would just invite the council members and members of the city administration to the next airport board meeting, if you would like, and in fact, we will give you what I think is a, a fair and factual representation of the history of the airport, which goes a little further than what we just heard about, also where it is presently, and then where it's going. I think when you drive by, you all know where the airport is. It's not just the hangars, but you know where the firefighting equipment parks, you saw where the National Guard helicopters park along Airport Road. It does include the paved runway, and it includes the hangar, and it includes space on the other side as well. We all kind of know where it is, and since about 1940 or so, the airport started right by Airport Road. The paved runway came in 1960. There in fact was a survey for, I'll get to the three minutes. There was in fact a survey done in 1960 from the FAA that shows the boundaries of the airport, and it's kind of where we know where it is. And it's that same FAA program that we're applying now. So there were boundaries established then when that runway was paved in 1960. We have, over the last three or four years, at request of Forest Service, firefighting, sheriffs, and others, built eight helipads on that northeast quadrant of the airport and others to make it better for both people in the city, as well as in the county, to have emergency services when they're needed. And we're going to have, as many of you know from presentations before, we're going to have more and bigger fires, we're going to have all kinds of stuff. So I think from the airport board perspective, we would invite you to have an open, honest conversation about all of the facts, and we're glad to go through those and answer questions, but we believe that the airport boundary is what you all know it is, and what you see it is as you drive by. Thanks.
Thank you, Bill. Anyone else like to make a comment?
Beth Hutchinson, 219 West 12. I guess we will be
I guess this will be about my every four years issue. The stone wall on Adams Street between 11th and 12th continues to deteriorate. It was doing all right until the gas company came along to put new lines in. And their contract said that any damage they did, they were responsible for repairing. That wasn't pursued and probably four years ago, I complained four or five different times about that. The rocks are falling down into the road. They get in the way of the plow. The plow plows them further away from where they could be reset. And I would like to come up with some kind of strategy whereby maybe the neighbors and the city would work to get that wall back in place.
Thank you. Hi, Bill?
Global, like 900 County Avenue. I'd like to offer some clarifying points regarding the airport specifically. I've heard said a few different times tonight in this presentation regarding control. Reality is the city surrendered that control when they signed into local agreement to manage the facility. Yes, it is city property. 100% will not disagree. However, the signing over the responsibility went to the board, the Airport Board. That responsibility rests with them. I understand the point of the city and the position they take. However, the reality is, is the control lies with the board itself. You guys are happy to join in? Happy to have you join in. If you want to come up and plow some snow or throw some asphalt down, that would indicate some control in the city's to have, but it doesn't exist right now. So I would encourage you to take a look at that as we go forward. There is a fix to this. You know, there's, you never come with a problem that you don't know the answer to, but the fix to this is the city to back out of that joint agreement. That's the fix. The challenge with that is since it's been in place, we'll go since 2010, there's $380,000 that the city would be doing to the county and that the inputs by the county is hard infrastructure that was put into that facility along with grants and matching grants for the perpetuation thereof. Happy to entertain that termination. You guys bring it forward. We'll give a good, hard look. It would be a, and pursuing the FAA funding at the end of the day, all I can say is more is better to get them back at the table. That was the statement that they made. They can't give good guiding information in that they don't have standing, but that's one iteration from the FAA is that more room is better. And that's what they need. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bill. Anyone else want to make a comment on anything? Because we've got the abandonment of the right of way issue. You know, if you want to speak on that, you need to speak now or anything else. This will be your last call for public comments until the recycling piece discussion.
My name is Lana Gray. I live at 1430 Lazy M Street. I'm here to suggest that city government is not a for-profit entity. I have a master's degree in public administration and that was one of the first rules I learned. When it comes to recycling and six more dollars, somebody said to me, it's just six bucks a month, but it isn't six bucks a month. This city complains about the cost of living and for the last four years, fees and fees and fees have increased. I think recycling is great, but I haven't read anything, including Mother Jones's article today on recycling plastics. I think it's a feel-good idea, but I don't think one city government should be involved. And number two, I think that everything I've read said it's, if you will, a waste of money. I think there's many ways for us in this community to better ourselves when it comes to energy. And one of them is not going through a recycling that the city operates. I don't think the city has the personnel. I don't think they have the financial application to deal with this kind of endeavor. And so I would hope that you would give serious consideration to the costs that you are burdening people like myself with. A single person retired, six dollars a month means a great deal, especially when it's added to the 350 or 70 dollars that I'm already paying for a waste disposal. But thank you for your time.
Thank you, Lana. Anybody else?
I'll give this a go. Walter Clapp at 301 North Flat. You know, I, I'm going to talk on the recycling piece. When I came to think about this, I went and looked at the RFP that was submitted for July 2020 to June 2025. So here is that our current solid waste collection contract is about to come up for renewal. I understand that Public Services has a bit of a monopoly where we are. And when I look at the RFP, in it, in section two is this huge thing about the recycling program and about how much waste was being diverted to it. And so it occurs to me that if the city fails to do something about recycling and this nonprofit fails, then our solid waste fees are going to go up. We're going to incur more fees because there's nowhere else for this stuff to go. There's no county landfill and there are monopoly that's got us sort of by the neck, if you will. So I don't really care if recycling works or not. Clearly metals do because you get paid for it. Plastics and glass, I guess, they're more skeptical of as well. But it is clear to me that we got to do something about recycling because otherwise we're going to have 800,000 more pounds per year of garbage and Republic is going to know that when they come to renegotiate with us in two years. So I guess I'm, I'm in support of figuring something out with respect to the fact that our, our prior agreement, our prior RFP, we're called out this recycling program and I wish you all the best of luck.
Thank you, Walter. Anybody, anybody else? Sandy?
Yep. Sandy Colley, 307 Hagan Avenue, South. Transparency in Government. I attended a land use meeting, standing committee meeting at the end of January and requested the meeting minutes multiple times and still have not received them. Today I requested the minutes from the March 28 Public Works Standing Committee meeting and I hope to see those minutes sometime this week. Speaking of transparency, normally on your agenda, you have the reports of all the standing committees, meetings, and I didn't see that on tonight's agenda. Reminds me of doing recycling since I made the guy get up. It's my understanding that less than 20% of the residents recycle in Red Lodge. I think by your own count, it was 18%. Yet you're asking the other 82% of the people to pay for those 18%. You might pick up another couple of percentages simply because people are paying for it now. For businesses recycling, they've been paying a hundred dollars a year. You're proposing to triple that. The odds of businesses paying triple for the recycling is slim enough. It's not very business friendly and frankly, I think it's going to discourage recycling. So, and I'm kind of going, if the waste management people that are currently doing it can't do it successfully, why does the city think it counts?
Thank you, Sandy. Any more comments? Yes?
Hi, my name is Peter Sholli. I live at 692 Lazy M. I'm talking about recycling. I have a question for you ladies. When it says businesses will be an option to, to contribute to the recycling, rental units are businesses. And up in Lazy M area on the golf course, I'd say 50% of the buildings up there are rentals. So they pay nothing if they don't want to? That's a question. So think about that. All businesses, you said according to the letter, don't have to pay if they don't want to, but we do. I have a house up there. I'll have to pay my 72 dollars, whatever it is, per year. And like the last lady said, I don't think we should be forced into paying. We, we recycle. We recycle all our cans and all our cardboard. We take it to the guy at the U-Haul, okay? He takes all our cans for free. We haul them down and put them in the bin and there you go. So, and then when we go to billings, if we do shopping in the billings, we take our cardboard with us, throw it in the back of the Subaru and take it to billings and drop it off. We're going there anyhow. It doesn't cost us anymore to take it to billing. It doesn't cost us anything. We do it sheer. We got to pay six bucks a month to have it recycled. Now, I think recycling is a good thing, but I don't think you should force us to recycle. If you want to recycle, by God, go recycle all you want. I'm, I'm with you 100%. But if you don't want to recycle, don't force them into recycling. It's, this is my opinion on that. Thank you.
Yes?
My name's Kyle Finn Mitchell. I live at 75 Number and Road, just right outside of Red Lodge. I actually run the recycling center in Red Lodge. Just to clear up some things, it has cost every business 300 dollars since I've been running it. I don't know who said that. They're going to triple it because that's not true. The other thing, I've been hearing things about where things are going. I've heard a statistic that everybody likes to mention that 25% of stuff in Montana that is meant to be recycled actually makes it be recycled, which is alarming, but that is not the stuff that we have. Every, I, I'm personally responsible for moving all of that stuff and none of it goes to landfill. There's not one thing. As for plastics, I mean, plastics is a losing battle. We created that stuff. I mean, the only thing we can do is recycle it at this point. It's just going to go in the landfill and never break down if we don't do anything else. I mean, that's all. I just wanted to clear up, there's no change in the business thing. I mean, ideally, every business would just pay the 300 dollars, like the right thing to do. And the only reason we have them charged more than like your rental home or whatever is because a rental home versus like Tom Kuntz's like business is like a huge difference in, you know, amount of stuff. And that's all I'll say for now.
Thank you, Kyle. Anyone else? Got plenty of, plenty of time and plenty of interest in hearing you.
My name's Sue Wobbling. I live at 418 South Hauser. And this is about the recycling. And I'm, when I first came here and found that there was recycling, I think that was when Normance was running it, I was really impressed that such a small town would have something that would take care of, you know, as much of their own garbage as they could and recycle it in a, in a responsible way. I also liked the fact that the Bear Tooth Industries people got an extra income source and something that they could do and help the city and help themselves. So I thought that was a good thing. And I don't know if, do you guys hire in the Bear Tooth Industries?
Yes. So we, yeah, this is actually Brian right here is one of them. He heard all about it, so he like, he wanted to come with.
That's great.
He doesn't talk about it. But, yeah, hopefully we actually have four of them currently.
Yeah. So I, you know, I'm, I'm sorry to hear that, you know, people, I understand that people who don't want to recycle perhaps shouldn't be forced to recycle, but then their trash would be, would, would increase the amount of trash that the city has to pay for all into the landfill and bin, which is ecologically not a good thing. And so I'm hoping that it can be worked out amicably. I, I did talk about this on Sunday with dinner with some friends and some of my friends who are not currently members of the recycling, which I am, said that they did the 10 dollars for each ton that came for recycling and they would just wait and fill their truck until, for like two or three months and then pay 10 dollars. So that would be one way that people who didn't want to have a constant fee would be able to still recycle and, and do the right thing by the airport and the city, you know, and the landfill situation without feeling like they were being forced to do anything and it would still give a little bit of money towards the recycling program. So I think that might be one option for the city, whatever percent of people who don't recycle, I think that much.
Thank you, Sue.
My name is Kelly Fugier and I live at 205 South Adams. I've been in Red Lodge for seven years. My wife raised here. And I have yet heard anything about what the recycling center is going to take. Are they taking plastic, glass, cardboard? I take all mine to billings and it's turned to hell as much more than a sack full. But if I have paper or anything like that, I take it to billings. So we're going to, it's just like my water bill. I get charged for water that I don't even use. We go to Arizona for a month and I get a bill for 102 dollars for water and I'm not even, what? I'm not even using this water. I've never heard of such a thing. Hell, I lived in billings for damn near 40 years of my life and I've never heard anything like this. So first of all, I guess before this comment section, I thought I was going to hear what your dear recycling center is going to do. Are you going to pick up my glass or are you going to pick up my?
Please direct your comments.
Okay. Well, anyway, how, how are they going to do this? So for six dollars a month, that's 72 dollars a year. I got better, I got better things I could use that money for. Kind of like our streets. I think we have, how are we going to pull and get all these streets done? Curbs, gutter, they just keep deteriorating. There's chuck holes now you can damn near drop a car in. So anyway, that's my opinion. I haven't heard anything from the start of this that we would even start making comments without even knowing what the recycling center is going to do for that six dollars. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? And remember, we will have a public comment period formally for this issue. But if anybody has anything else that they'd like to say right now, that's what the time's for, so. All right, is there anybody online who'd like to make a comment? All right, that's all.
Yes, yes. This is, hi, this is Debbie Kotar and I live at 1115 Park Avenue. And I was born and raised in Red Lodge. And I would just like to say that I echo the comments of not being a forced recycle and paying the six dollars per month, but if you want to use the recycle center, then pay when you want to drop your stuff off because there are other options for recycling besides being forced to pay six dollars a month. It's a lot of money. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else online? All right, that'll be the end of public comment period. Next up is standing committees and with regard to following council rules and procedures, part four, section one requires material for, all material for the meeting to be submitted to the clerk by noon on the preceding Thursday. And secondly, committees must provide the clerk with specifically what they'll be reporting on. If that's not provided by noon on Thursday, it will be not provided time at the meeting. Of course, if there's urgency about the matter or unforeseen circumstances, please contact me and we'll see if it can be added prior to the meeting. And the purpose is to ensure the public receives adequate notice of committee presentation. So we do want to be transparent. We want to make sure that the public has notice of everything we're going to be speaking of. So we, we did just revert back to committees not very long ago, so it's one of the things that we need to make sure we have right.
Point of information.
Just a minute, please. First up is.
Point of information. I can do that at any time you're not speaking.
What would you like?
So I just want to know, one of the things I think is valuable that I've gotten from some of the constituents is that they like understanding what the city council is working on in their city council meeting. And so to me, I would like to see at least a vote. I don't know how my other council people feel, but to go back to the way we were doing it before, we weren't running out of time on the clock. I don't know what the motivation is to restrict what we're going to be. I don't know what the motivation is to restrict what we're gonna be talking about. Many times, I find that these meetings that we have, we have the public engaged, we have questions that we bring, that we get from our constituents that we can address, and then we can update the community during this period. So I guess for me, I just would like to understand and find out from other council people if they feel like this is a productive use of time for us to update the committee.
This is an item that's up for discussion on, on this agenda. And if you'd like to have it for a discussion item at a future meeting, then we can, we can look at that.
Okay. So I'd like to have Bonnie add that in. And I'm putting that in the comments, so I'd like to add that to the next city council meeting for discussion by the city council.
All right. First up is admin and finance. And for admin and finance, we're gonna have the public hearing for recycling. It's resolution 3620. It's the resolution to set fees for the recycle center, and it is a public hearing. Chris, do you have anything you'd like to add as far as an introduction on that?
Sure. So currently, there is a group that is running the recycling center, a nonprofit group, and they are going to go away on July 1st. And so this measure was brought forth so that it does not close down and we can continue to have offer recycling to our city residents. And so we're proposing a fee of $6 per month to be charged on the monthly water bill. Anybody wanna add anything else to that?
I think that we should talk about what the recycling center currently does and what we're proposing to continue with the service, with the fee.
But would you like to do that before the public hearing?
Yeah.
Yes, I think it's important, like the last man talked about. It'd be good to know what we're proposing so that then people can comment.
Do you want me to go over what, what they currently do? I've heard, I've heard people saying that recycling just goes into landfill and it's just simply not true. I will echo what Kyle said. Our aluminum and scrap metal goes to specific recycling and billing. And this is one stream of recyclables that are income producing and the metal prices change daily. Our plastic is transported to Earth first aid and billing. Our cardboard, and I apologize for my voice, our cardboard and paper goes to Centennial Recycling in Colorado. Their commodity broker that matches our product suppliers, such as mills and plants, who will process and reuse the materials. Red Lodge is one of the few places in Montana that offers glass recycling. Our glass goes to recycling works in Missoula where it's crushed and then shipped to Momentum Recycling in Salt Lake, which is one of the biggest facilities in the country. And where it's transformed into new bottles and other products. Glass is 100% recyclable, can be reused endlessly without loss in quality for periods. So we used to have a.
Compost.
Compost, thank you. But that is no longer an option. So is there still a group that does electronics recycling there?
Jen?
Yeah. So the, the nonprofit that currently runs the recycling center absorbs the group that had been doing the twice a year electronics recycling. And so now it's the case that you can take your electronics that are recycled with the rest of your recycle roll to the recycling center. And so we, you know, the proposal is that we continue operations as is, so all of those things would remain in place.
Electronics?
Yes. Electronics recycling is available, same as glass.
I, I would just like to make a couple comments. There were a couple misconceptions out there in Facebook, social media land. The city is not buying the recycling center. We already own the building. We already own the land. The $6 fee that would go on the water bill is to create an income stream to pay for the operations of the recycling center, for the city to take that back. My understanding is, is that the current recycling group has no debt. So even though it says in there we would be taking over their debt, there is no debt that we would be taking over. So I just, those are just some big misconceptions out there that I wanted our constituents to be aware of. And they actually do have roughly $25,000 in assets that will come to the city. In cash assets. They have multiple tens of thousands of dollars in equipment that we will also be giving out for recycling. I think I would, I would add too here just that, you know, is this, this proposal has been vetted for the better part of a year by most of us and by the community. And essentially, I'd like to hearken back to something that one of the, one of the commenters had made, I think Walter said it, which was essentially that this community has gratefully been recycling in some form or fashion for a lot of years, a lot more years than lots of other communities our size, and I think we should be proud of that. And also, the fees that every single community member pays for waste, waste disposal, regardless of how many days you're here, if you have a residence here, then you are paying on your taxes for waste disposal. And our waste disposal contract is negotiated every five years. We currently pay the better part of half a million dollars. And Jody and I will tell you, because we sign claims every month, it's one of the biggest bills we pay every month as a community. And our current contract already builds in the fact that they are not dealing with 800,000 pounds of waste because we divert it through recycling and we send it to other places to be reused. And if we stop doing that, then Republic had, I mean, will, it will impact the amount of effort and energy it takes to remove waste from the community. And it will be felt in terms of your waste disposal fees going up significantly. And so I think that's one thing to take into consideration. I also have heard this 20% number a few times. And I, I would just argue that I think it's, that number of how many folks actually use the recycling center is a little bit harder to quantify than just saying how many number of memberships do we have versus how many residents do we have. And the reason why is because we do have, for example, we have, you know, S T R businesses that manage multiple residences. They have one membership, and they have a business membership, but that's one membership covering multiple homes in the community. It's also the case that we do have folks who use drop-off fees. And those, those, those folks aren't taken into consideration when calculating this 20% number. So I would just encourage folks to consider that, I think that number of how many folks are actually invested in this community having recycling and using a recycling center is a little bit harder to quantify than just number of memberships to number of residents. And then I think the last thing I would point out is just that, I, I, it's 2023, and I think that it's important to recognize that waste diversion is a healthy part of any, any part of a waste disposal program for any community. And to, to not consider recycling in this fashion, I think would be, would be problematic for this council to just assume that we would let this lapse without trying to address it. And I know that the budget that we put out that is available and will be available in the minutes from this meeting as well, the budget that we put out helps folks understand why we settled on $6. And the argument we tried to make, can we keep membership only working? Can we just keep it as a membership program and keep the recycling center open? And the short answer is, when we did the budget, it was $40,000 shy of where it needed to be. And so this was the compromise that we came up with. We also wrote into the resolution that it will be reviewed in a year, and I believe we just put annually, to assess whether or not the fees are appropriate for the service that the community receives. And so if we try this out for a year and it turns out that it's not working, then future councils and future budgeting folks can take a look at it and decide we have to do something else. So this is a commitment. The resolution is written as a commitment to ensure that there is no lapse in recycling for this community. And as of July 1st, when the nonprofit dissolves, you all will still have somewhere to keep your recycling. It gives us leverage for when we are focused on our next round of negotiations with Republic, and it gives the community a chance for an out if it turns out that we made a mistake. So I, I think those are all things that are important to consider when we're talking about the value of this project and moving forward.
Thanks. Thank you.
I think really quickly I'd just point out too, there, because a couple of people commented that, you know, they, they don't want to be forced to pay the $6 a month, but they would still like to have the opportunity to drop off the recycling for $10 per time. And that would not be a reality. That would not be available, just so that's clear to everybody, that, that would not be an option.
It would be for, for out of, it would be for county, for county members. Yeah.
Well, if the recycling center goes away.
If the recycling center goes away.
Oh, correct.
We do not, but, yes, to accept this, there will be no recycling center to go drop off for $10.
Correct.
Yeah. Sorry.
Could I point out a couple other things too? There is a private citizen who has pledged $4,000 to help with approximately 111 households with that monthly fee. So those who feel like it's a burden at $6 a month, they, there would be a program for that. Recycle Red Lodge is also helping to send Noel, who's our, I think, our sustainability coordinator, I don't know what her title is, sorry, to go into a conference for solid waste management professionals for the purpose of exchanging ideas and advancements in the field. So by having Noel attend the conference, we might, we might come up with a better plan. This, as Jen said, is not forever. It's, you know, it's a, it's a solution because July 1st is coming up quick. And we don't want to have a lapse in the ability for people to recycle here.
Thank you. Does anybody else have any more suggestions?
I, I did have one other thing. Another comment that I received a lot on is that the hours are not conducive, you know, they comped some people's schedules. And we did stick with, in our budgeting, the same plan that we have now. I know that the, the two people that are currently employed at the recycling center are more than willing to look at other options moving forward, you know, trying to get more people to recycle and, you know, offering other services. It's just finding out ways to pay for that. So, you know, please, if this goes through, you know, I would say, reach out to the recycling center. And, you know, if you've got a great idea, talk to them about it. You know, they may be able to incorporate it.
All right. So with that, Bonnie, you open the public hearing. Okay. So the public hearing is now open. So if you have a comment that you would like on, on the record for recycle, this recycling fee of $6 a month, please approach the podium, and we'd like to hear from you.
I think it was Teresa Whitler, South Broadway, Red Lodge. So I think it was 2018 that the city adopted the Energy Conservation Plan and has since implemented and looked after a number of those projects through the Sustainability Board. One of those projects and categories was, was meant to carry on recycling for Red Lodge. It's part of the plan that we do for our carbon footprint, as in something that the city has dedicated itself to do with the adoption of that plan. So I think the city should be standing by at least, you know, to go and see what they can do to keep the recycling center moving and to do the right thing.
Thank you. Any more comments? Bill?
This is Zevon from Six Second South Platte. I have submitted a list of questions earlier. Have you read that? Have you answered those questions today for me?
If you'd like to make your statement, then please go ahead, because this is the time for your statement, if not a question and answer session.
Well, thank you. Problem I have is that other than this public hearing, I heard about, is that I've not seen anybody with a budget of what we would have covered. So I've made this list of questions, I've not seen an answer tonight.
Thank you.
So you have few.
Any more comments?
Hi, my name is Kate Belinda. I live at 11 Beaver Tail Road. I am the environmental science teacher or science teacher, green team advisor, and a member of the Red Lodge Recycling Board. That being said, I feel like Red Lodge Recycling stepped up in a time that was very catastrophic for anybody that cared about recycling. China stopped taking our recycling. Republic came in and said, we're done. We all packed up our recycling bins and thought things were over. We're very lucky that a group of people came together and said, hey, we think we can fix this. And we have. And we have increased the amount of recyclables that has been removed from the waste stream. Funny thing about recyclables is we just throw that word around, right? I heard it's plastic. She's absolutely right. Plastic doesn't get recycled. It either gets upcycled or downcycled because of that actual chemical structure of it. And so when you take those plastic bottles in, we're pretty neurotic about what we'll take, right? We do not take those containers of yogurt because they're a seven. They cannot be recycled. We take the best quality plastic that we can that can be upcycled or downcycled, whichever way you want to look at it. You're right, the A Y guy will take your aluminum. He's taking it because he makes money off of it. We want the aluminum so it can offset our costs of taking the recycling of the plastic because it's not a easy one for one. I hope that you guys make the decision, because there is no way. If you close the recycling center and it closes its doors, Republic will raise your rate. It will happen, I guarantee it, because that waste will be going in their trucks, and they know the waste of them. Whereas we've been working very systematically with different organizations to make sure that whatever comes in our door is recycled. And so I know that six months, $6 is the law a month. And as a school district, we pay $300 for our high school and $300 because it is important to take recyclables out of the waste stream. And Kate, you did know, bauxite is a ore that is processed in the Ukraine. I'm sure that you did know that there's a war going on there. Do you think they're doing a lot of bauxite work right now, getting it to usable aluminum? Aluminum prices are probably going to go up. If we continue to recycle our aluminum, it is a closed loop. We don't need the bauxite. And so this is a great opportunity for us to look at the economics of what we recycle. My kids do it. They do trade off maintenance. Not everything is a plus in the recycling world. Some of them are negative. And so we want anybody in our community, if you pay the $6, bring us your recyclables. We'll make sure that they're out of the waste stream. And we hope you, as a city council, vote yes. Do this.
Thank you, Kate.
Can we say one thing? So just to add on to what she was saying, the, the problem with recycling as a whole, and the only way that it ever makes money is when you have these huge slots of people and you have more volume, right? That's the only thing. So the more people that you do get, like you're saying, the more money that you make, you generate from the things that you make money off, right? It's a win-win if you get everybody $6 a month, and then you get all of their stuff. Win-win, you know? You could maybe even knock some money off of it down the line. I don't know. I mean, I don't see why not.
Thank you. Who's next? Walter?
Yeah. And this is probably for future years, assuming you pass this. It occurs to me that incentives are important here, and I agree with what was just stated. You know, if we have more people recycling aluminum essentially, or other metals, we have the potential to save money for the city. And so if you were to record who actually recycles, and you knocked off a dollar or two from their monthly bill, if they're actually recycling metals, you might save the city some money.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Ann Rude. I live at 11 Silver Hill Road. And I work at the recycling center. Kyle and I love our job. And I just want to say that for clarification, if you have a water bill, you don't get $6 added on. But if you still live in the county, you're still gonna pay $120 a year. I think that needs to be clarified, that it's just the city that's getting the $6 bill, and everyone else, everything's gonna be the same. Kyle and I will be there, I hope, and will be taking your, all the same thing. But to Mr. Pu, I don't know if Mr. Puget is here, Kelly?
But please speak to us.
Well, I'm looking for him. And then there's another man named La-Z-M, last name's F. I would love to teach people about recycling. If they came to the recycling center, I would give them a tour. I've given my spiel about what's, what's I've given my spiel about what to, what to bring, how to bring it, how to sort it. And I, if we could make a video that people can watch on Facebook or whatever, YouTube, about what we, what we take and what we don't take, I would love to make a video. And I would love to teach people. So we'll get more people. It's not the worst thing in the world. And I think we'll get more people if they're paying. So I do just keep that in mind, that Kyle and I love our job and we want to help.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Beth Hutchinson, 219 West Wells. I can't support this right now for a variety of reasons, but the main one is, I think as it stands right now, it's a feel-good effort on the part of the council versus a comprehensive plan for trash handling and a plan that would show what the real benefits are. We haven't seen, to my knowledge, a written plan that shows where this balance or unbalance occurs. There is not a complete budget. We saw an expenditure budget, but we did not see anything about income derived from certain items that they get paid for. The rationale for the distribution of charges is, oh, just charge everybody the same. Here it becomes a little personal. Let's see. Five, 59% of our community is non-family. That suggests one or two people. If they're anything like me, their garbage cans are typically rather empty. On a normal time, except in the summer, when I'm weeding away galore, I put in two small garbage bags, like from the grocer's. That means I have excess, and that takes away from that huge amount of weight that would be tossed off that they're talking about, because it's already been budgeted for. So lots of our garbage cans are pretty empty. Obviously, if you look at Facebook, some people are overflowing one week to the next, but that's not the majority of people in town. Furthermore, a fee implies voluntary choice to absorb a service. Now, that's not the technical definition, but it's a person's normal understanding. So for normal people, let's call it a tax if we make it $6. There are many ways that we haven't looked at, to my knowledge, where we could be reusing these items within town. Glass, for example. Someone brought up the issue of paving. Glass goes into asphalt very nicely. Glass is a great substitute for gravel. Why not keep it here instead of paying to transport all over hell and back? Historically, the recycling of aluminum in this town has been accomplished totally voluntarily. There was the Lions Club bin. People take it to buildings where they're ordinarily going. So that shouldn't be a cost, or it can still be accomplished. The question of plastics was raised. I'm not going to go back over that again. I think that when you're looking at a lot of people and they say, oh, somebody can bring a load from the county for $10, well, I would venture very, very confidently, I couldn't make a $10 load in a year. And I'd like to donate my funds where I choose.
Thank you very much. Any more comments from the floor? Yes, Sandy?
I think it was Jen, because I was over there, said that there was a $40,000 shortfall. If, if you did it the way it's been, been done.
Yeah, it's a, that's the estimate.
$40,000 divided by, what was the number we came up with short, with homes in Red Lodge? 1167?
Sandy, can you just make your point? And, because we're not supposed to have a back and forth.
I, I'm just saying that $40,000 shortfall divided by 1,167 homes doesn't come out to $72. The other thing I would try to remind all of the city council people is that you're sitting in those seats representing people in your district. And as much as this is a great program, I love recycling, you're representing and voting for those people in your district. So if 80% of them say no, you should say no.
Thank you, Cindy.
Hope's now in 517 North Houser. I love recycling. I'll recycle no matter what. But the fact that I can put the recycling in the back of my car, drive it over a couple of blocks and drop it off instead of hauling it to buildings is huge in my life. I don't have time to drive my recycling bins. And the 20% I keep hearing over and over, as a longtime board member at the library, I can assure you that we don't have 20% of our population using our library. And we are mill, we have a mill levy on that. I can tell you, 20% of people are not using a swimming pool, probably. But to have a swimming pool in this town is amazing when we think of those people who do use it. Our parks, we have mill levies for those. We're not getting a full percentage of all of our residents using our parks. We pay that gladly. One of the benefits of living in a community like Red Lodge is to have these amenities. And I hope you support recycling.
Thank you. All right. Anybody else? Yes?
So I'm Matt Laudla, 1,009 South McGillan. I'm not necessarily opposed to this, but it seems like we're constantly, like, being asked for more money for this or that. Like, you know, with the jail last year, I mean, a few years ago, you doubled our water bill. So it's like, where does it stop, I guess? That's what I'm wondering. And then, I guess, sorry. I agree with, a mill levy is something you actually get to vote on. You actually have a, a say in. Really, we aren't getting a say here. It's just going to be your decision. It should be, if you're, if you're going to increase our tax, we should vote on it, I think. And then, I don't know. Like I said, I'm, I'm not opposed to it, but I, I currently don't pay the fee. And I think if people want to pay the fee to recycle, I think that's great. But I don't think it should be obligated on everybody that doesn't use it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Any more public comments? Are there any public comments from anyone online? All right. Last call for public comments. Yes?
I'm Brian Legeliers, 211, with Adam. I'm just standing here, kind of like Bob and Ted, some questions. You can really know what was going on. I've seen that there are a lot of stuff, not very good communication. Learned a lot tonight. And kind of made me think about my time back down in Colorado. I lived down there for 15 years before I moved back to Montana. And Colorado, or, in Colorado, recycling was, you had, you had three different bins. Well, when I first moved down there, down there, you had two bins. Big garbage, big garbage can and a smaller recycling one. I was down there for 15 years. By the time I left, we had a garbage can that was this big, a recycling bin that was this big, and a compost bin that was this big. If we're, I want to go back to something that Walter said about the contract for trash removal being up for renegotiation. If we're going to just get charged more for trash in the future if recycling goes away, doesn't it make sense to keep recycling, watch those trash cans go down in size over the years, and pay less in trash? You know, that's on our taxes. People don't like taxes. Let's let the taxes go down. You know, $6 a month per feet on recycling isn't that much in the big picture. If we're looking at long-term goals, bringing our, our taxes down via less trash going out of the city. I mean, they'll make a lot of sense, but just here to learn, and I hope that's.
Thank you, Brian. Any more comments? Yes? Last call. All right. Go ahead.
Thanks, Kristen. My name is Martha Brown. I live at 413 Barrier Circle East. I, one comment that I don't, one piece that I don't think has been mentioned yet that I think is important is that the recycling group that took over the, took over our recycling when the city let it go a couple of years ago, has worked extremely hard the last couple of years to make recycling profitable, or at least break even, depending upon the stream they're in. They have all the contacts made. It's all set up to go. If we let recycling go right now, if we don't continue it, and then down the road, we kind of realize that we made a mistake, because that's where the world is going and we should have recycling, it would be extremely difficult and expensive to redevelop all these contacts and streams. I'm very much in support of continuing it now at the $6 a month.
Thank you. All right. Any more comments online?
Yes. I, okay. I don't know what the right answers are, but I'm in support.
Can you state your name, please?
I'm sorry, yes.
Can I?
Angie, Hazel Swart, 301 South Pagan. I'm in support of trying to save the recycling center. I think it's a really important thing for everybody to do. I don't know the right answers. I'm wondering if maybe by the next public hearing, there can be more information for people. I know there's definitely some out there, but some people aren't getting it, it sounds like. And is there any possibility that another system will be devised? If we pay $6 a month, say for, from January till the end of the year, can there be a process to investigate creating other ways to fund the recycling sun, center to keep it going without the $6? But do the $6 as a patch and have a definite end to that in a timeframe where it will be figured out how to keep it? Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else online? And no one else on the floor, so?
I have one more thing.
Okay.
What guarantee do we have that the price is going to stay at $6 and not, like, double? You know, short, in short order? My question.
All right. Thank you. Yes?
Sorry, I just got here. Michael Keys, McGillan Avenue, Red Lodge. When it comes to the recycling center, my understanding is if recycling center closes, then our recycling goes and dark garbage. I've owned and operated a few businesses in my lifetime. I'm certainly not going to take more garbage for the same amount of money. Somewhere down the road, we'll pay for it. Or pay more money somewhere along the way. So my recommendation is keep recycling center going. You know, it's a good thing. It's a good thing for the bare teeth industries and some other people's jobs. But one way or another, we're going to pay to get that stuff out of town. Nobody takes it away for free.
Thank you. All right. This is the final call for any comments from anybody in here or anybody online. Okay. Public hearing is closed. Thank you very much. We'll have one more public hearing after this, and then we'll vote on the resolution. So stay tuned. And if anybody has any questions that they specifically want to direct after you, you're welcome to contact this council person or city health. Next up is Land Use and Planning has a right-of-way abandonment application. Courtney, do you want to give an introduction for that?
Sure. So this was a process that started while James Green-Gleare was here as the Recycling Director. And so the right-of-way abandonment application is for a property that, you know, when, when we abandoned a lot of, like, older of our property, there's just a lot of weird things that go on in Red Lodge. And so this would help to straighten out those property boundaries, make them more in line with the adjacent properties. But if you have a question specific to that, James is here, so stop asking the abandonment.
Thank you. May I have a motion? I move to approve. Resolution, the right-of-way abandonment application? Is there a second?
Was it early in the meeting?
We can hear you. Is there a second? On the right-of-way abandonment? All right. Open for discussion. So has everybody had an opportunity to look at the information in the packet?
Yes. From, I guess I'll just start the discussion by saying at the Land Use and Planning Committee meeting today, we had Courtney talk to us about this specific piece of land. And as I understand it, it is Seventh and Cooper. And it is adjoining the alley. And, I'm sorry? Oh, Seventh and Chambers, excuse me. And then it joins, it butts up against the alley. And it cuts this, this piece of land off in a kind of a triangle formation. And it's, it's not, it doesn't abut a street or any other public access. It, it simply is a little triangle sliver that actually is wooded.
James, would, would you like to say anything about this proposal?
Yes, thank you. Good evening, James Green-Gleare, 801 South Grant. I'm here representing the landowner for this. As Courtney had mentioned, this is Old Grail Road right-of-way. That kind of first interstate bank to the mighty facilities, island at Rock Creek. And the property owner currently owns 10,300 square feet. That's how large that lot is right now. And they're asking for the 1,563 square feet, which would make it a squared-off lot. Right-of-way on the other side of the alley, which would be to the east and on the corner of Seventh and Cooper, has been abandoned in the past. So much of that right-of-way on the intersection has already been abandoned. And I, I'd like to point out that that right-of-way, I don't think anybody from the public would recognize that that is currently right-of-way. There's an alley that goes right up adjacent to it. As Kelly has mentioned, it's wooded. And there's, there's no access through that property right now in terms of getting to a park or to the creek or anything. So I, I don't think there's any public benefit that I can see. And abandoning it will give the property owner a little more freedom to, to develop that property, to take that property that is currently not paying property taxes and add it to the tax rolls. So the long-term goal is for housing at the property, but right at this point in time, there's no definitive plan on how many units or anything like that.
Does anyone have any questions for James?
I don't know if it's James or not, but so are they going to be paying the city money for this property then? Are we selling it to them? If they're going to be using it maybe for future development?
That's a good question. And that gets brought up when I've worked at the city, that always come up. Public right-of-way cannot be sold. The city can sell land that it owns as deed ownership, like Air Force property, for example, but not public right-of-way. That's why, if you notice on the fee, the fee for a public right-of-way, a petition to abandon public right-of-way, is one of the larger fees of the city. I think that is in part because the city, by state law, is not allowed to sell it. So they collect a sizable fee.
What is that fee?
$500.
And you know what the increased tax, property tax would be for something like that? So that's $1,500?
I don't know. And obviously, it'll depend on how probably you follow it, if there is. Housing on that portion of the property, obviously, it would be more substantial than if it was only used for, say, setbacks or green tape. I know the client wants to keep as many trees as possible, and it's a very wooded area. So I think that that area would probably be kept as a setback area in all likelihood and then used as kind of a buffer for the, for living homes there, or any.
So I'm just trying, and I'm just trying to understand this. So what's the motivation for the city doing this, I guess?
So when we have, you know, right-of-ways that, especially if they can't be used for any, like, public access or access to, like, Rock Creek or anything like that, it just kind of sits there. But when we abandon those right-of-ways, when feasible, you know, when, when we deem it, it's acceptable, we then are able to accrue extra property taxes. we deem it, it's acceptable, we then are able to accrue extra property taxes on that.
I guess I just want to reiterate to you that during Land Use and Planning Committee meeting today, one of the things that struck me was that this process of abandonment is not something that we would generally consider. It's not something that planning would generally support. But this parcel is kind of like, the reason why it's a railway right-of-way, it's like a, and so, it's the last piece of a railway right-of-way that's already been, there are other portions of it that have already been abandoned, and this is like the last piece of it. And because of the, like, no trail can go through it, the city, this is not a piece of property that could be developed in some way to support the public good in any other way. And so, that's why it's in front of us. And, yeah, those comments earlier today were compelling to me. Not something we would normally consider. One question I do have is just what, is there a reason why, this is, I forgot to ask this this morning, but is there a reason why this is up for action today? Like, is there a reason why?
It was publicly noted in the paper a couple months ago.
Okay.
Public hearing.
Okay. All right, Marge.
Yeah, I have one more question again. So, I was just curious, I think up on the last page, it talks about the city council laid up conditions. Examples of conditions are, here include installation, pavement, sidewalks are curbing better. Are we doing any kind of conditions with this piece of property or not?
I mean, when they decide to develop it, they'll have to follow all the zoning conditions. And depending on the size of the development, they might have to come through planning board where there would be additional conditions, but otherwise, they would have to follow any other city ordinances. There aren't any special conditions for this particular lot?
Right. And currently, I jumped down there today and there are no sidewalks on any of those lots, I don't think. So, I think our current planning document, and James and Courtney probably know this, says that I don't think they would be required to put sidewalks in there because there are currently no sidewalks there.
That's raining.
Right. Because that doesn't mean they, because.
All right, any more comments or questions or discussion? If anybody else would like to say anything, then otherwise, we'll move on to roll call. Yes?
We have public comments.
Public comments? Okay. Any public comment on this issue? Did you have a comment?
Yeah. They get to open it, open it, just like we did the other one.
Is it a formal public comment? Public hearing. All right. Public comment is open. If anybody'd like to make a public comment, please approach the podium like last time and don't take more than three minutes. And come on up. Any comments? Any comments online? Last call for comments, online or in person? Yes, go ahead.
I have a comment. Angie Hazel Swart, 301 South Pagan. I'm learning. I actually went down and looked at that property the other, last night, and I agree that it doesn't really look like there would be any use for anybody else to use it, other than if you wanted to have a little patch of trees and brush to, for wildlife. But other than that, it really, really wouldn't be appropriate for trails or other public uses. It looks like it's a pretty small piece and it's on an alley. And I wish they could be required to put sidewalks in, but, as a trade, but I know that's not an option. That's all.
All right, thank you, Angie. Any more public comments? This is the last call for public comments, online or in person? All right. Public hearing is closed. And if there's no further discussion, questions, inquiries, we'll move on to roll call.
Daniel?
Yes.
Durbin?
Yes.
Keaton?
Yes.
Ronnie?
Yes.
Thank you. If there's any correspondence, it would be in your packet. And with that, I'll take a move to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
All right. Maybe you do. Thank you for coming.